Good evening, everybody. We will call this meeting, the regular meeting of the City Council for the City of Lathir Village, to order. We apologize for our late start. We had a study session with six items on it and we had really allotted only enough time to do maybe one and a half of them. So, a couple things had to be finished before we could come out and begin this meeting. So, I apologize again for the delay that anybody's been sitting here on the edge of their chair anxiously awaiting us to get going. I'm sorry if it took us a little longer. So, the meeting's called order. The clerk will call the roll.
Roll call. Mayor Brock.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Garrett.
Present.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson.
Here.
And Councilmember Stallings.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
So, we have three present and two here? Is that over here? Okay, alright, sounds good. We invite everybody to join us and stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are we missing? Oh, no, it's right here. Consent agenda is the next on our agenda. It happens to include the actual approval of the agenda, the minutes for the study and regular meetings held on, that were held, and the minutes that are included in the packet, and the minutes for the May 1st, as well as the planning commission minutes of Wednesday, April 12th. It will include the, it also includes the approval and adoption of a resolutions to adopt and co-opt into Oakland County's urban county community development block grant program for the program year of 2018 to 2020. And it also includes a approval of a resolution designating the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month, which God knows I need to have recognized on occasion, so.
And it's actually, just for correction of that, was it Children's Mental Health Month?
Okay, Children's Mental Health Month, I'm sorry. So, is there any one of those items that any member of the council wants removed from the agenda?
Well, there's a change that needs to happen on, which one is this, April 17th? Very minor, but, so.
April, oh, on the, alright. Minutes of April 17th, we'll remove then, so we can, is there, are there any other items that we want to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the one item of the minutes of April 17th being removed? It's been moved, is her second.
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Need to put your mic. Minutes of April 17th, then we will look at those. What was the correction you had?
Very minor, you have Councilmember Ferguson in present and absent.
Present and absent.
I was in both places.
I knew you had a split personality.
Both places at the same time.
That's really good.
Why would we have to do that?
I didn't know that you, I can't do that, but I'm glad to know one of us can. Good job. Anything else?
Was I not there? You are.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Are we talking about the April 17th study session minutes or the regular minute?
Regular minutes, I think, aren't you?
Study session.
Study session, I'm sorry.
Study session, okay.
You got him absent.
So, he was absent on that day?
Yep.
Okay. Was Maria's name, it's not even?
I think I was there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Needs to be added.
Okay, thank you. I didn't even have to add, so you said that.
Alright, so it's the study session of April 17th. And with those two corrections, any others? Do we have a motion then to accept the minutes of the study session as corrected?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. We'll move on to item six on the agenda then, which is the dispersment report. If I can find my way there. As per usual, we have two reports. One is from April 1st through the 15th of 2017, an amount totaling $47,913.69. The other period coverage, April 16th through the 30th of 2017, an amount totaling $489,666.61. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns about the dispersment reports?
I do. And I'm trying to find the page, but I know it's from Hart for Tree Service. That will be on page, I think this is 22.
Okay.
On their local road funds. And it's 11/27/09, and it's tree removal for 27/9/4/3 sunset. So, and I'm assuming this, this is why I want to ask the question. It's on there because the tree that fell there, that was on city property, and I know that the tree was pretty big. They had it be cut up and?
That's correct. So, any portion that's on city property, we have a contractor come out there and he removes the tree.
Okay.
That indeed was the case.
Quick question on the web posting. I saw on page one. It's printing publication costs and April annual web posting. I think I'd asked this question before. Is this web posting for the services that we give from Oakland, or is this our actual website that $950, so?
I mean, our treasurer's here, but I'm gonna, I believe it's for our website. Do I stand correct on that, Ms. Brachi?
What page are you on?
Quite a bit for, if it's just our website.
Is that page 21?
You say 21?
I'm sorry, one of six.
Oh.
What's on the side of it?
What's it? Yeah.
Twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty, okay. Right here.
Oh, that's for the, that is for where the charters are hosted at.
Charters and?
You know, where all the charters for all the cities.
And all our ordinances.
Yeah, and the ordinance are under that.
Okay, so it's not for our, okay, our city website.
I don't think so, is it?
No, that's for where you get?
No, it's not for the website.
That's, because that's an enormous amount for our city.
It's for all the cities.
But it's for our services that we get. Okay.
It's the last item on page 20.
Yeah, I see. I just wanted to be sure that that was.
And I believe, is it the clerk that?
Wow. And that makes sense.
submits all that information to them?
Mm-hmm.
And that's what I thought.
I submitted a couple updates to our municipal code.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or concerns about the items on the dispersment report, the council?
Not for me.
Who is this Scott Baker that keeps showing up?
That's, we've all wanted to know about that.
Trying to get rid of him for a while.
Give us, give us a moment to deviate just a little aside. Our city attorney at the end, Mr. Scott Baker, is a new father.
Oh.
For those who may not have heard yet, for the first time.
If I fall asleep, that's why someone's not there.
And a beautiful baby daughter, is that correct?
Caroline.
Named Caroline?
Caroline.
Patricia.
That's why you grew a beard.
So, you, he's going to stay afterwards to accept any gifts and so on that any of you wish to?
Congratulations.
Bring forward.
I know.
Alright.
Yeah.
Any other items on the dispersment report?
No, sir.
That's all I had.
Nope, that's all I had.
Did I have a motion to approve then?
I made a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded?
Yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the motion carries. Hart Miller reports are next on your packet and includes the police department's report, the report of the director for Parks and Recreation Department, and our permit lists, work that was, permits issued in the last month or so. It includes a report from the Downtown Development Authority by Mr. Cammer, the executive director, and the city administrators' report. So, are there any questions on any of these reports that anyone has? Though I would accept a motion to approve the reports at any time.
What is, first of all, this is a great report that you have, Trina. Thank you for what you've done with the, I love the parks, the exercises in the parks. That's just gonna be wonderful. What is Shipshewana?
I hate the exercises.
What is Shipshewana?
I know.
Yeah, I do too.
I figured I would be.
Those of us who grew up near Indiana know what Shipshewana is.
You'll know. Yeah. Shipshewana is LaGrange County, Indiana, and it's the Amish, it's Amish country.
Okay.
And they have the, one of the largest.
World's largest flea market, isn't it?
It's the world's largest flea market.
Yeah.
And then they used to have a lot of Amish.
That's right.
You can take buggy rides and, just a cool little town.
Flea market. That grabs my attention.
Yep. Get your ticket today.
So, you might want to?
I grew up in southwest Michigan, and believe me, we knew what was going on in Shipshewana.
Mm-hmm. I'll see.
All that home cooking that the Amish did down there.
So, we got yoga in the park Wednesday and Saturday at 8:00 a.m.?
Yes.
Does that start, when does that start?
June.
And then Tuesday, and then boot camp, ooh, Tuesday and Thursday at 6:00 p.m.?
6:00 p.m. in Annie Lathir at Park.
And it begins?
What is the boot camp?
In June, it begins in June.
Yeah, I believe it's the weekend, or the week of, like, the 12th? I think that's the Monday, so.
Are you running the boot camp?
You are, Mr. Mayor.
I am? Oh, I'd be lucky if I could even move.
The yoga, is that drop-in?
What is, what is boot camp?
Yep. Boot camp.
Seriously, what constitutes the boot camp?
It's just a high intensity, hour-long, lot of running, flipping tires.
Flipping tires.
Moving tires straight out.
Flipping tires.
Yeah.
I haven't flipped a tire in?
Going to the hospital.
How many years, Tom? Forty, fifty years since I've flipped a tire?
I can't say that.
Is there any cost for the yoga or boot camp?
Yes. I believe they're both 80. And then there's also the $5 drop-in daily.
Eighty for the summer?
Yes. So, it would be for?
From June to?
A 10-week program.
Eight o'clock in the morning.
Is it eighty for two? Eighty for both classes or eighty apiece?
$160 for two.
Or, or $5 drop-in?
Yes, daily drop-in.
Which is good.
Yeah.
I'm asking for a front.
Yeah.
I'm not doing boot camp.
Okay.
Do you still have plans to do the pickleball?
Yes.
Is that tentative? I don't see it on the schedule.
Does that require some changes?
Yeah, that probably?
Wouldn't be on the schedule.
I'm talking with Pam. She just let me know how much money I have in parks improvements. So, after the farmer's market tent and the new fiber, wood fibers we're getting for the playground.
Yeah.
Kind of see where we're going, how much we have after that.
Okay.
But it should be in by middle of June.
Okay.
Farmer market.
Talk to the city administrator if they, if we think we're running short of money, because we, we ought to just get it done.
Yeah.
You know, that's part of the program, I think, we were all intrigued with, that you were gonna get going, and we're still in the fiscal year.
Yeah.
So.
Well, 400 visitors, right? That was the first one?
First day.
For farmer's market?
For farmer's market.
Yeah, we were just shy of 400 people, visitors on Wednesday for our first farmer's market.
Oh, that's good.
How do you count that just out of here? I know we need to?
We have clickers.
Manual clicker.
They're all clickers. Well, that's wonderful.
Interesting.
Thank you.
So, it was a great day.
One potato, two potato, three potato, no, I haven't. She, I was, because I was returning Texas from my son's wedding into Birmingham on Sunday, I was there in the neighborhood of their farmer's markets first day. And I'll tell you, it gives you an idea of what this should look like out here as we keep building on it.
Absolutely.
Because the street was full of people.
Yes.
Just full of people. It was the most vibrant municipal scene I've seen in years. It really was. And I hate to be advertising for Birmingham because, or sound like, make it sound like it, but it just brought home to me the potential?
Absolutely.
For what that thing can do if we keep building it the right way, so.
What Sean and I are aiming for.
The things that, the things we do that help to bring that sense of community. There were people coming out of the woodwork. They were coming from every neighborhood, they were walking over there, people pushing strollers, I mean, it was just?
I think that helped too if?
An incredible crowd of people.
When we get the Saturday market?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe next year.
Yes, yeah.
The Saturday market?
There's no question that the weekend, that the weekend type thing helps if you can do it.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's, because the families, it is meant to be a family day then, the weekends, so.
Yeah.
It helps build that spirit, but it just was great to see. And I was glad to see that greatest startup for this one.
Sure, thank you.
Very exciting.
Thank you.
Other questions related to the departmental reports?
Would it be appropriate to ask somebody to fill us in on Sean's report?
Sure. What do you want to fill in? Food Truck Fridays kicked off.
Well, I'm particularly interested in letting our residents know about the awards.
Yes, do that.
Wow.
Andy?
Well, I was there. Our treasurer was there. Sean was there. Mr. Martin was there as well. So?
I was supposed to be, but I.
In my director's report, I had put on there congratulations to Sean Cammer for his successful night at the Oakland Main Street Award, or the banquet, which was held downtown in the Historic Strand Theater. So, a lot of people there that did?
Downtown Pennia, Pennia.
Oh, yeah. What did I say? Downtown?
Downtown.
We don't have a Strand.
You lifted up to our imagination.
That we have a theater now.
So, there's a lot of people that didn't even know Lathir even existed, long we had a DDA. So, it was quite pleasing to know that Sean is turning on the lights here in town, so to speak. And Bobby Lovins, who sits on the DDA board, took home an award, which is outstanding, I believe, organizational committee leader. And the other award went to, who did the other award go to, Pam? I forget.
Food Truck Fridays?
Food Truck Fridays.
So, Food Truck Fridays was voted as one of the most successful startups events in Oakland County and all the DDAs, so, which was awesome. And by last week, it was, it's obvious that it's well on its way to, you know, doing something even better than, than the Oakland day last Friday.
We did have a video produced for that, did we not?
So, we actually had a video produced, and a lot of time and effort went into, and into the awards.
Is it true that you were singing lead?
Yeah, I don't think so.
No, I guess not, okay.
So, my assistant, Mr. Ken Martin, actually wrote a song, and he put it to music and submitted the song, but needless to say, we got a notable mention in front of a room filled with about 400 people, all the DDAs in Oakland County. And it was, it was nice that, see Lathir Village up on the stage being recognized in front of all the DDAs.
Yeah.
That's great. Are we gonna get to see that video sometime soon?
I actually have a copy of the CD, it's in my office. The mayor did indicate maybe at a study session you would like to see that.
Yes, I think we would like to see.
So, but not to get any hopes up too high. Our DDA has a long way to go. It's in my, it's actually in my budget report. So, we do have some challenges in our business district that, as a community, as city administrators and community leaders, we need to address. So, and that's, I feel that that's, we're well on our way, just that focus has to continually be there, and we can't let up.
Andy?
Yeah.
Part of Sean's report also talks about some things that he brought back from a recent conference he was at, and some ideas. I don't know how or when, but maybe it might be possible for Sean to join us either at a study session or, you know, sometime we can get together and talk about some of those innovative things he learned, talked about, you know, brought back, some ideas he's got that I think some of them are mentioned in his report, that I'd really like to maybe go into a little more depth with them.
And he's been sharing those with the Downtown Development Authority Board too, so that would certainly be possible.
I would like that, yeah. Great job.
Alright.
Great job.
Any other questions or comments on the reports?
Food Truck Friday starts this Friday.
It began last Friday.
Oh, wait, yeah. Yep. I wasn't able.
Well, I guess I should go through Sean. People that want to become a part of the Food Truck Friday, they have food trucks? That's, they just go and fill out the application?
Yeah, just all they need to do is contract, Sean.
Yeah.
We try, he tries to balance the types that are coming every, every single Friday and mixing in some others from time to time, so that we get a variety.
Gotcha.
So, it's kind of something new going on a lot of the time.
Okay.
So, is that to understand that?
And yet not to have so many at one time that they don't make any money, so they won't come.
So, you don't just get rights to come all summer?
Right.
Do you, it's a weekly decision?
Right.
So, he keeps track of that, okay.
Yes.
And then he makes sure that they have insurance. I know we talked about that before.
Yes, yes. All of those, there are requirements they have to submit, but?
That's good, that'll?
Just if you have somebody that you know that you think does a nice job and would like to be a part of this, why get them in touch with Sean, and he'll follow up with them.
Okay.
He's been the kind of, ever since we started those last year, he's been a great enthusiast for the program, so, he'll follow up. Could we have a motion then to accept the departmental reports?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. At this time, we would invite anyone in the audience who might wish to discuss items that are not listed on our agenda for action this evening. If there's something you would like to address the council on, we would like to afford you the opportunity, invite you to step to the podium, use the microphone so that you can be recorded, and give us your name and address for the record, please. Anyone wish to be heard on anything this evening? We will have a public hearing in just a little bit on the budget, so if any of you are wanting to talk about that, you'll have a chance.
If I'm not mistaken, nothing about? You, 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 you.
No, it is not, it is not on the agenda, so. You missed me.
Does being a table item on the agenda count?
Well, before you say anything, city attorney, is it appropriate for us to discuss this or not respond, or what's the protocol?
All communications would go through the mayor. Typically, there's no dialogue during public comment in council.
Right. They don't normally engage, usually any engagement comes from if the person asks a quite direct question that we can provide an answer for. We, I think, have been informal enough to do that in the past, but typically, it's their chance to address us on anything they've got in mind to talk about, and to keep, we ask them to keep the comments about, no more than about four minutes.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Anthony DiMaggio, and I am speaking on my behalf as owner of DiMaggio Fine Art and Jewelry at 28001 Southfield, but tonight I'm also speaking as a board member of the group Citizens for Progress and Political Transparency. Specifically, last month, April 17th, council voted on the appointment or not appointment of interim chief Scott McKee. Scott McKee was shown at that council meeting to be the unanimous selection of many people involved in Lathir, 90% of his fellow officers, significant numbers of businesses and residents, many members of city government, including Mayor Brock, city administrator Potter, our city attorney. So, as I see it, clearly, most everyone that was asked in the city are in favor of Scott McKee, and I think except for four council persons, councilperson Manorino Thompson, Stallings, Ms. Garrett, and Mr. Ferguson.
You said we're not in favor?
Not in favor, because if you were in favor, I think it would be a done deal.
No, not true.
So, at this point, I don't think it's inaccurate to say, I get another 30 seconds too. I don't think it's inaccurate to say that city council does not approve of his appointment at this time. Councilpersons Donna Stallings and Kelly Garrett have publicly stated that city administrator Andy Potter did not provide due diligence in the four and a half months from January until April 17th, when you were supposed to do due diligence through advertising in many ways for an acceptable alternative to police chief, interim police chief Scott McKee. I don't understand why that was tolerated. If it's true, I don't understand why after four and a half months, that showing of insubordination didn't cause you to reprimand him or fire him. I mean, four and a half months later, he's done nothing, and then, as Ms. Garrett expressed in the meeting, she felt ambushed. All of a sudden, she's got to vote for Scott McKee or not, and she stated, if we don't vote for Scott, we're gonna look real bad in the city. I think that's terrible. So, when I think about what has caused the discontent in the city, and as councilperson Ferguson stated, it was quite a show last week, or last month, Andy Potter says it's not true. And he says that he was asked to hire Scott as interim chief in January and to suspend the $8,000 cost for a statewide search and the $45,000 fee for a national search that I believe councilperson Ferguson, for $45,000. He also stated that over the five months that he got to observe Scott, he found that Scott was an exceptional chief, and in his opinion, that in a community of just over 4,000 people, he's the best we could ever hope to have, because in Mr. Potter's opinion, Scott could be chief in any of the larger cities in Oakland County. I thought it was quite a compliment, and coming from Mr. Potter's experience as a longtime city administrator, and I believe also as a former police officer yourself, I think that he has the, I would say, intelligence, experience to make the decision whether or not to appoint, and he did, in his absolute authority, and this is important, his absolute authority, he appointed Scott McKee as chief last month. Mr. Potter also confides that he hired McKee as the chief, and even though ads are running online, he intends to keep McKee as chief. And I think it's very important that we just forget about all the hullabaloo back and forth, who did and who didn't do what, and go right to the law, right to City Charter 3.10. And the charter specifically states that neither the council nor any of its members or committees shall dictate the appointment of any person to office by the city administrator or in any way interfere with the city administrator to prevent him from exercising his judgment in the appointment or employment of officers and employees in administrative services, and that, of course, includes the police chief. Now, as I see it, that statute clearly defines why Mr. Potter's appointment last month stands, and that in fact Scott McKee is our police chief. He's not our interim police chief. He's the police chief.
I need to have you wind up now.
Okay, I'll wind it all up. I think council must realize that to extend for even a day, not 60 more days, that is, it is not within your authority, and that in fact we are with the police chief, and there is no need for an extension. Thank you.
As I said, we won't, I'm not gonna engage in a rule in this, but I do have to clarify one thing, and that is that while it charter may say that the administrator is to make the appointment, it does say that that appointment is subject to confirmation by the city council.
Well?
The city council has every right to table that action and withhold confirmation until they feel comfortable. So, that is what the action they took at their last meeting. last meeting.
I believe that's why...
I'm not going to engage in any more discussion with you on this. I'm just saying, well, it is true.
But it's not true.
Well...
If I'm not able to speak about it, I can't.
Well, that's right. You're done for the evening. We thank you for your, thank you for your comments, and we'll move on. But I was just trying to set the record straight that the council does have a responsibility to confirm or not confirm, and they're exercising that. Anyone else wish to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda?
Yeah, I would. Unrelated to what Mr. DiMaggio just said, the only person that could speak for me is my wife. Thank you.
(laughing) That's similar to my case, but...
I didn't, I'm not speaking on that. You can ask my wife that.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard this evening on any other item?
And I would just like to make a record that it wasn't a matter of rejecting Scott. I'm going to say that again. It was a matter of due diligence, that's all. If we take the time to table everything else until, you know, we do due diligence, that's what it was really about. Thank you.
Six and a half months of due diligence.
Well, you weren't on the inside of a lot of these discussions, so I can tell you that, and none of them were derogatory or negative of the acting chief. I think the general consensus is that he entered into that role, found a lot of work that needed to be done, that had been deferred for a long time, took it on, and I think, you know, we owe him a debt of gratitude for that, if nothing else. So there's, I don't think, any preconception by any member of the council that he is not qualified.
Yeah.
So, anyway, moving on. At this time, well, it's an interesting heading. It's time for a public hearing. It says the council, okay, it does say the council required, all required and properly noticed. The first public hearing is for the 2017-2018 budget, proposed budget. The council has been actively working for the last several months with the city administrator and the city treasurer and other members of the team on the budget for the upcoming year. And tonight, we have scheduled the public hearing for that budget. I will ask Mr. Potter to give a brief overview of some of the highlights of that budget, then we will open the public hearing to the public. It's such your opportunity to either a, ask questions you might want clarification on if you've had a chance to look at the budget document that's been made available here at City Hall for some time, or if there are comments, recommendations you want to make about the budget, those are welcome also. We'd again ask you, when that time comes, if you would step to the podium and give your name and address for the record, so that the clerk may make proper note of the comments and questions. And Mr. Potter?
I just want to say thank you for everybody coming here tonight. Appreciate that. More faces, the better. Some faces are new, which is awesome. And I will start with my 2017-2018 budget. I'll keep it brief. A lot of people say I have a tendency to talk long, so I focus on just the important topics of the budget. So, with that being said, the 2017-2018 municipal budget contains 15 budgets, to include the DDA budget and the long-term budget. The downtown development budget belongs to that of the DDA, like I just said, and it usually lies in accordance with Act 197 for the purpose of redevelopment and the development of the DDA district as it relates to the tax incremental, increment finance authority. The city of Lathrop Village currently has a DDA board consisting of 10 board members who previously passed the 2018 budget. City council's legal authority when dealing with the DDA is for the sole purpose of passing their budget, of which is contained in the 2017-18 municipal budget. As in the case with many municipal budgets, expenditures have increased just above that of our revenues. In some instances, such with water, sewer, and garbage, those increases must be passed onto the consumer, with the city of Lathrop Village being tasked with the collection of those fees. Many of our citizens believe it is the city who raises the fees on these two categories. When dealing with the water that comes into your homes or businesses, it is the southeastern Oakland County Water Authority, or SACWA, whom the city purchases water from. It is SACWA in turn who decides the fee structures when dealing with this water. This year, SACWA has increased the water rates by 2% from $15.13 per 1,000 cubic feet to $15.43 per 1,000 cubic feet. Excuse me. Likewise, sewer rates are controlled by the Great Lakes Water Authority, with many Oakland County sewer rates dramatically increasing in 2017 and 2018. Lathrop's increase of 4.9% is minimal compared to other Oakland County communities. The mean score of that increase is approximately 10.2%. Many communities in Oakland County have went up to 15%, 16%, 17% dramatically increased. So we are way at the bottom of that scale, which I don't know how they calculate that out, but some of it has to relate to how much water we use. And because of our population is aging, older people tend not to use as much water as younger families.
One of the old guys aren't as clean.
So that's one of the reasons. However, because sewer rates and how we deal with that is getting to be so expensive, that's really the line share of why those percentage of increases exist. SACWA deals with waste and garbage. It's the South Oakland County Refuge Authority, and they have passed on increased costs, again, to the consumer at just 3% for fiscal year 1718. Looking at the budget, these expenditures represent a large portion of our budget that is ultimately passed on to the consumer. This can be easily seen by the $13,158 increase. Other areas of major concern, excuse me, are our roads. A major source of income mitigating municipal expenses is that of Act 51. Act 51 monies are received to repair and fix our major and local streets from the state of Michigan. For fiscal year 2017-18, Lathrop's Evergreen Street project required approximately $687,000. This expenditure was dictated in part by a federal grant to Southfield, Lathrop, and Beverly Hills. Despite this very large expenditure, city council voted to continue our local street repair as dictated by the city's capital improvement plan. For fiscal year 2018, city engineers picked the two worst streets in Lathrop, those being Eldorado and Wiltshire. If you live on those streets, a portion of those streets will be resurfaced, and drainage issues will be also corrected. Bids are currently ongoing. Capital improvement projects concerning our sewer lining will also continue at the cost of $142,000. This expenditure will complete the city's area south of 696 Cure and Place project. So we'll have that whole area south of 696 complete with the sewer lining. Despite some of these large expenditures, excuse me, this budget manages to stay in the line with previous budgets, requiring only $118,814 of fund balance. The majority of these expenditures in major and local roads came from their prospective fund balances. So when I started out, we had substantial fund balances in the major and local roads, which a line share of that went to go pay for the Evergreen, which came out of the major roads. Tax rates have taken consistent with previous years, with the total millage rate decreasing from 22.7046 mils to 22.2343 mils, despite residential property values increasing by 9.82% and commercial values increasing by 3.13%. This increase is actually a detriment to our budget for the Headley agreement, Headley Amendment, taking approximately $92,000 from our fiscal 2017-2018 budget. Oakland County estimates it will take at least 15 to 20 years for our budgets to equal the pre-2008 budgets. Since Lathrop Village is 98, or 99% filled out, increasing our tax base is necessary providing the high quality of service to our residents and businesses. To accomplish this, a focus on the redevelopment of business district is critical. Our business district currently has approximately 175 businesses. Many of our buildings along Southfield and 12 Mile are antiquated and in need of remediation. Businesses in Lathrop are eager to learn of the ways of increasing their bottom line. Assistance in the area of business development and redevelopment must be the focus of this administration if we are to increase our tax base. Attracting different kinds of businesses are important as well. Coenforcement is another critical part of attracting different types of businesses, as well as younger families, who can move into our upscale community and breed new life into our homes that might need a little TLC. Thank you.
I might just add just a couple comments. One on millage rates. Most of us are very conscious of the amount we pay in property taxes, and we don't stop and always stop to think or see just where all that money's going. But about that total amount that's on your tax bill every year, the schools get almost 31 mils of that. The city, by comparison, levies just what, 22.69 roughly mils of taxes to support all of our city services. The county is a much smaller one than that, and there's certain, there's a college, community college taxes as well, and some regional authorities that we, I think are familiar with, with the zoo and the DIA and so on. So those are about another 2.3 mils, roughly speaking. So when we look at all our tax bills, I always like to remind folks that our city tax rates are right in the ballpark of what you would expect to find for similar cities of this type. Schools are probably a little higher historically because Southfield Public Schools is, was a, what are they called, an out-of-formula district to begin with, which means they were allowed to levy over and above whatever the state allowed them to levy normally in order to support their school system. So that millage has always been just a little bit higher than maybe some other cities, if you're familiar with, how they would compare. The money that we generate goes, we have no debt service to speak of. 0% of, virtually 0% goes into debt service. About 5% of our money goes into streets. The library gets about 4.5% of our money. Refuge collections 30. All the other operations in the city combined are about 77%. So just to give you a little better in-depth look at where all this money goes and how it's being used. And with that, I would open the, I would declare the public hearing on the budget open, and if anybody wishes to make any comments or ask any questions, again, if you would step to the microphone and give your name and address for the record, and we will call on you. Appreciate you. Anyone? Going once, going twice? Hearing none, we will declare the public hearing on the budget to be closed, and the council will have action on that just a little bit later in the meeting. The second public hearing is related to a vacation of a portion of 11 Mile Alley. This is between Evergreen and Red River, and I would call on the city attorney to introduce this stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This actually came up, this was a public alley that was primarily, or most of it was vacated 10, over 10 years ago with the Phase 1 development of Michigan First Credit Union. As part of their Phase 2 development, it was discovered that a small portion of the public alley just north of West 11 Mile Road and west of Red River Drive had not previously been vacated when we were, everyone was under the impression that it was. So this, this action tonight is for the vacation of the remaining portion of that public alley that's north of 11 Mile. It's a very small, kind of, I don't know if I have the actual square footage, but it's approximately, I believe it's only about 60 feet of alley that wasn't vacated. In part, it may have been due to the fact that was a cell tower that was moved, and I think that's why it was overlooked, so.
It would have been your predecessor.
That's true.
Pardon?
His predecessor.
Yes, it was his fault, right?
It's easy to blame him when he's not here.
Yeah. It's a good person to blame. Does that completes your introduction?
That completes my introduction.
At this time, we'll declare the public hearing for the alley vacation open. Does anyone wish to be heard on that? Hearing none, we will declare that public hearing also closed. So thank you all very much. We'll move on then to our action requests. The first one is the city council will consider a motion to adopt the proposed resolution for the fiscal year 2017-18 budget. And I assume that can be, Mr. City Attorney, can be done with the one motion, the one contained on page 44 in the packet?
That's correct. The motion that was presented to council could be adopted as one motion.
And this has been, these were properly, all these were properly advertised, I assume. You can, or the clerk can attest to that?
I believe they were, yes.
So that it is appropriate for the council to act on them this evening?
Yes. And just for clarification, this has been posted on the city website?
And we, which one, on this?
The budget resolutions, were they?
The budget.
No.
Was the budget posted?
No, the budget has not. The budget has been in the lobby when it was completed, as per the...
I noticed a publication that did go out in the newspaper indicated that a full copy of the budget was available downstairs, just because of the sheer size of the budget. Publishing it in its entirety is not feasible from a cost standpoint. So just historically and traditionally, those budgets have been made available downstairs, and my understanding is that that was done, those were available to the public.
Thank you. So, council, is there a maker of the suggested motion on page 44?
Can I make an amendment? Can I amend this annual fiscal year resolution?
To what? Semi-annual?
No. Regarding the salaries, is there a way we can freeze those salaries until such time we can review all salaries on staff?
Have the MML maybe?
Yes. I'll approve, I'll approve this budget with the exception of the salaries. Just don't want to put the cart before the horse, because...
Well, we've already adopted a motion in a previous meeting that said that salaries would be subject to proper presentation by the, to the council. So I'm not sure why you need another one, but I would ask the city attorney for guidance on how to include your suggested wording into the motion.
My suggestion would be to make it as part of the motion that any budgeted salary or wage increases not be effective until such time that the requested review that council so desires is done and completed. I would strongly encourage against bifurcating just the wages and salary from the approved budget for appropriation reasons. I don't think that that would translate to a functional budget. But I would include that in the motion, the resolution that is proposed this evening.
Is that an acceptable?
That is acceptable. Can we, can I, Yvette, can I get that documented?
Well, this has all been recorded, so the clerk will have that.
Okay, thank you.
So what's the wording?
I'm comfortable with that.
It will be to adopt the annual fiscal resolutions for 2017 fiscal years prepared and submitted by the city administrator, and that...
With the exception that any... With the exception that any budgeted pay raises are not implemented until such time that council has reviewed the individual employees and is satisfied with those reviews before implementing any budgeted pay raises.
Second.
She seconded already. I'll make a motion. That's the motion that she seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. The budget is adopted. There is consideration now for the council to consider a motion to accept and approve the draft version of the City of Lathrop Village Water System Reliability Study for submission to the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. Council discussed this at length, we had a presentation again on this item. And while technically, we don't have to adopt this thing, I, we have decided that we would put it on here to adopt only because submitting to something to a state agency, we, I think, I feel better, and I think the council will feel better that we've reviewed it and authorized its submission. So council, is there a maker of the motion? I think you'll find it on page 45.
Yep. I'll make a motion to adopt, accept the City of Lathrop Village Water Reliability Study as drafted by Giffords and Webster Engineering and then sent to the state of Michigan, DEQ, as required under the laws of Michigan.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, can I interrupt for a moment? I'm going to anyway.
There's no way to stop, so go ahead.
Okay. Well, actually, because I was, you know, reading ahead, we just discussed the vacation of the alley. Is that supposed to be on our agenda for this evening? Because I don't see it as a action request.
It's on second page.
It's only under the, and you're right, it's only under the.
It was only under the public hearings.
Right. Okay. So it's not an action item, not intended to be an action item tonight?
Did we have a motion on it?
There should be, there should be a motion to approve the resolution that was provided to council, vacating a portion of the 11 Mile Alley.
It's not on here.
So you want to make a motion?
I don't see.
I apologize for the tardy suggestion, but adding item G perhaps to approve that, make that motion approving that resolution.
Okay. Make a late motion to amend the agenda to include an action item G.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Okay, we'll get to item G, well, we'll come back to it.
Good catch.
I will take credit for that.
Yes. You're entirely entitled to do that. All right, the next is, the council will consider the second reading of the amended City of Lathrop Village Code of Ordinances, Chapter 46, Article 5, Public Nuisances Generally, Section 46 to 109, Arrangements, Arrangement/Operation of Lighting Facilities.
I can address this, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is, last month, we did introduce this ordinance amendment, would it be amending the Public Nuisance Section, Chapter 46 of the City Code of Ordinances to regulate specifically strip lighting that goes around the perimeter of windows of businesses. This would prohibit that type of lighting that would be visible from any street or adjacent residential property, but also prohibit any flashing, blinking, strobing, or create the impression of movement or changing colors of those lights around the perimeter of windows. This ordinance was drafted in direct response to concerns raised by council that there's a prevalence of these new types of lighting popping up and that they're a significant distraction to drivers on Southfield Road, so. There were no, I received no significant changes or suggestions after the initial introduction of this ordinance, so what's before you this evening is identical to what was presented last month. If there's any questions with respect to it, we have to address them at this time.
So, suggested motions on page 48, is it?
Page 48.
Page 48 of your agendas first.
Do we have, is this the final reading?
This is, this is the final reading.
Okay, and then it'll be very good.
The second and final.
Wonderful.
Is there a maker of the motion?
I'll move to accept the second reading of the amended City of Lathrop Code of Ordinances and approve the.
Go to the next step.
Yeah. The lengthy, I will approve. Move to approve the lengthy wording of the motion to accept and approve the second reading.
Second.
Wow.
It's been moved and seconded?
Seconds, second and second.
Yes. Question, the buildings or the businesses that have it already, what is the, is there a grace period of which they have to remove?
This ordinance will become effective 10 days after publication, because it's a general police power ordinance, it's not a zoning ordinance, there is no grandfathering in. So 10 days after publication, this will, this will be the law of the land, so to speak. What I would encourage is our code officer to update and perhaps notify all the business owners that would be in violation of this, and perhaps give them a short period of time to come into compliance before issuing citations, but no, there is no grandfathering in of existing businesses with this, this type of perimeter lighting.
So, and we haven't been proactive in talking to the businesses that already have this type of lighting?
There hasn't been any prohibition on that type of lighting up until now.
All of the businesses have been contacted and spoken to.
Okay.
Yeah, I do recall Sean saying that.
Yeah. We have had discussions.
I just want to go in there and start ripping them down, you know.
Any other questions or discussion?
No, I'm good.
All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. We'll move on to item D, and this is a tabled item, the contract, a consideration of a motion to extend a contract with Lathrop Services LLC. It was tabled at our last meeting, and if, I would ask if anyone wishes to remove this item from the table this evening. If I hear none, it will remain tabled until our next meeting. I hear you none, so I will say that it is tabled. Item E is also a tabled item, city council, this dealt with the appointment of the chief of police, and that was tabled. Again, I would ask if any council member wishes to remove this item from the table this evening, otherwise it will remain there until our next, our next meeting, when it will once again come up for consideration.
Question, question. Am I allowed to ask a question?
Of course.
So the April 17 meeting regarding posting, we should be getting an update on.
Oh, yes, we'll be.
That's, that's not listed here, so how is that addressed?
He does have an update in them.
Yeah, there is an update.
That he's got.
Previous, and we'll.
Okay.
He will provide another one to council before the next meeting.
Okay. Last question, what's the duration of the table?
Till the next meeting, till we remove it from the table. But it will automatically appear on the agenda as a tabled item at our next meeting, and we have to then remove it from the table if we wish to act on it at that meeting, or whatever the council decides at that time. Same with item F, it is a tabled item, and this has to do with the acceptance and approval of the 2017 capital improvement plan, and I believe that capital improvement plan has been, it was tabled because of one particular reason. Can somebody remind me what that was?
Didn't have the city attorney's name in it.
Somebody felt slighted.
Anyway, the capital improvement plan was included beginning on page 61 of your packet. So if you wish to act on it this evening, we, again, I would ask for a motion to remove this item from the table. As much as we've improved the budget this evening, I would think this would be an appropriate action.
And this is what we just discussed in detail, so I will make a motion that we.
Remove it from the table?
Second.
So move the second, remove this item from the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. This item is now removed from the table, and what would be appropriate here, do we have a proposed motion? No, we don't, no.
Can I just?
Mr. City Attorney, could you just give us, provide us an appropriate motion for approving or accepting the capital improvements plan for 2017 through 2022?
Yeah, the appropriate motion that I believe council will be looking for would be to approve the proposed capital improvements plan for 2017 and incorporate that in the 2017-18 budget.
Is there a maker, maker of sub-motion?
Some moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. And now I get to item D, which was the adoption.
May remind the mayor that that report just came in, I believe, today. So I put a copy of that vacation in front of each council person.
Ah, it is at each of your places. Ah, it's right here. City Attorney, you submitted this to us, I believe?
Yeah, this is, this is the resolution.
Which you already explained.
Which we explained as part of the public hearing, but a motion we seeking this evening would be a motion to approve the resolution regarding the partial vacation of public alley.
If anybody wants to know what it looks like, you're welcome to pass this around. It's a very tiny piece, but nonetheless, that little sliver down there, that's what it is.
So that's what we're looking for, a motion to.
Is there a maker of that motion?
I make a motion.
That motion?
Yep, to.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to vacate the portion of 11 Mile, 11 Mile Alley as described by the city attorney in his document. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries, and the item is adopted. The city administrator's report was included in his, in the departmental reports. City Attorney, do you have any updates for us other than the exhaustive, grueling pace we've put you through so far?
You're lucky I stayed awake tonight, so, no, I have nothing further from, from our office.
All right. Any questions for the city attorney? Do I understand that there was some discussion down at that end of the table about scheduling the marijuana task force to meet?
That is correct. I believe we've briefly discussed the potential meeting dates.
Yes, very soon.
All right. Is there any unfinished or new business that council wishes to bring before us?
Just a quick question on the dog ordinance. We were, I guess we were supposed to appoint a three-member panel. We don't know if we have that on the agenda, or if we've set a date or anything like that?
Yeah, there is not, to my knowledge, there hasn't been, there hasn't been any appointments to that.
No, there hasn't.
Committee made yet.
And is that scheduled next month?
I think we could probably do that, yeah.
It will be.
Is it council that appoints?
No, well, one for council, one for the chief, and one for the.
City administrator.
Administrator.
Okay, so council will appoint one member?
Yes.
Okay.
They have to fill out the application online.
Can I ask the question? If, if a resident previously had a problem with maintaining their dog's composure, are they eligible for this position if they apply? Now, that's a logical question that we haven't addressed.
Well, I don't know that we can make them ineligible, can we?
Can't make them ineligible, no, but they're, but it would be.
But it'd be up to.
Representative.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
So they certainly.
So do you use common sense?
And we have, we have to use common sense.
Okay, I'm just asking, because I just feel that may happen.
I think we were, well, I can assure you it probably happened. I, I shouldn't say it that way, because, but I know we've had one inquiry from such a party already.
Oh, really?
Would like to sit on it.
Well, I didn't know that.
We'll have to see if she, if the individual actually applies or not, so. But it'd be up to council to appoint or not to appoint.
Okay.
So the chief will be making a recommendation, the city administrator, and council will have to have some discussion.
Now, there has to be a representative from council also, huh?
Doesn't have, well, council will appoint.
But we don't have to, there's not someone.
I don't know that it has to be a council member, does it?
No.
No, we appoint.
We just do the appointment.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other, any other questions or items to wish to bring up? Being no addition.
I want to, I want to bring up, I just heard this morning, and I want to just give a big shout out to the Lathrop Village Police Department. This is Police Officers Week, and they were celebrating, over the radio, different cities were highlighting and applauding their police officers, and I certainly want to applaud ours.
Yes, indeed.
And say thank you for your diligence, your hard work, and all of that. We have a great, great police department, and thankful for our police officers, and I just wanted to say that. And just an apology, I know we missed the May coffee hour, I got that three-week bug, it was horrible, but I got a great team now, six members that are helping with June and July, so just wanted to say that.
Be no additional business to come before the council. We will then adjourn to a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
So moved to second, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for being here.